November thirteenth, City Council, thank you, so start with the budget.
I don't know. What my allegiance is to the United States of America. The Republican Party stands for my nation, for God's sake.
That be clear to Zuroko.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Montoya. Alderman Wittenberg.
There.
Alderman Behrhoff.
Right there.
Alderman McGee. Alderman Carr. There. Alderman Rolt.
A little more from things. Public comment, as a reminder, the public comment period is not a time for dialogue. Purpose of the public comment period is for the mayor and Alderman and the city to receive input from their community. It is in fact a one-way communication to the city council. The city's administration and departments are available for discussions at the meeting. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Moving on. Do a presentation for the twenty twenty four financial audit. Thank you, uh, brief presentation. So, uh, for any, uh, members of the council. At the treasure, you've got, uh, two documents. One is the reported insights document, this is on the green page here, this is the one that's gonna be a little bit more, uh, easier to understand, this is the more of the narrative. And then the second document is the full financial statements and all the supplemental information, except for our twenty twenty four audit. This has got a lot of narrative and a whole lot of numbers in it. Uh, so the first, uh, first act kind of serves as a summary. This is our annual audit. Uh, I encourage all the council members to go through, especially at least the reported insights from it. Uh, that's a little easier to read the narrative. Um, but within it, uh, the opening pages are basically really the outline of how they do the audit and the various, uh, various areas they focus on. And then some definitions about what they consider to be significant findings, material findings, um, things of that nature. Uh, starting really with page five is when you're going to start to see what our actual report card looks like. Uh, I happen to say our report card's very good this year with this audit. Um, I find just a little piece of advice, one of the easier ways to, to read this or understand it. With each, uh, with each main header and paragraph, so like, for example, on page six, when you see internal control matters. They're gonna start with again a discussion of what, uh, of what methodology, what methodology they used. Uh, and the areas they looked, um, and how they come to their findings. And then really, it's gonna be the last paragraph and often the last sentence where you kind of get, uh, uh, what your actual report card looks like. Um, so in this particular area, internal controls, they're going to go through all the things they did. If the last sentence, we identify no deficiencies of material weakness. That's what we're looking for, alright, that's, so that's good. So, kind of with that, um, you can kind of continue to go through one second. Um, so then they can kind of go through, uh, and see those areas, especially between, uh, pages five and nine, where, uh, the main areas they looked at. And really with every important area, including, like I said, you know, areas of fraud, nowhere, no known areas of suspected fraud. Um, all, uh, they not identify any areas of non-compliance in any area that were without outside the laws or regulations during our audit. So those are the really the main checkpoints where, um, this is a health check on, uh, our operations, uh, our financials, uh, and how those two things are related. Um, and so overall, we're pretty happy with the results, uh, so we would said encourage, definitely encourage you to go through the reported insights document. Um, you can go through the full financial statements if you want, uh, you're welcome to do so. And if you have any questions, as you go through it myself, Mark, or our councilor, Ben. Alright, any questions? Thank you, Ben. Next, we have a discussion on police department lateral hiring. I've been asking for this since our former chief was bringing it up that we couldn't legally do lateral hires. But a lateral hire is, it's let's say someone from a different department. And we want to approach them and have the work in Blue Island, but on our contracts and our way our civil service is set up, we can't do that right now. So I think you're gonna speak on this, correct?
Yes.
We might have to restructure our civil service at a future meeting if we want, um, do the lateral hires. And considering it hasn't really affected us yet, but it's going to eventually, expecting smaller departments. The, uh, retention of, uh, good police and fire, maybe something we should look into is a good tool. I know the former chief mentioned this to me and this one step towards doing that.
Yes. So we look at non-home rule communities around us that do have this capability. Uh, Homewood, we have a former part-time officer, it's a sergeant, Homewood, he was the one that brought it up to us. Their non-home rule community, a few years back, they switched from a civil service commission to a board of firing police commissioners, which they went through their resolutions, went through their city council. Essentially dissolving their civil service and creating their police, uh, board of police and fire commissioners. With that, the statute allows you to hire lateral transfers. Which is typically something we always thought was a whole rule community type, uh, scenario. From that, once they established it, they met with a union, established then what level an officer would come in at. That's kind of a varying degree. There's departments, let's say, if you have previous experience, you'll come in at the two-year pay. Some three, there's some departments out there that say, no matter how many years you come in, that's the pay you come in at. And then the caveat to that is you're also transferring their pension over from their previous department as well. So that would actually help kind of boost our funding percentage with our pension. Uh, this would help significantly, we've had officers from, uh, towns, maybe like Will County. Streets, Moni, that, that kind of area that are vacancies, giving less than us, that would like to come up this way. And wouldn't mind testing for us, but they're then coming in at an entry level pay, which is almost what they're making there anyway, even though they've got five or six years on. So, you know, Posen is another good example, that Posen officers top out it. Maybe just a little over what our officers make walking in the door. So if they were gonna look to come here, they would want a financial incentive to do so.
So. We're in the initial stages, so I'm not sure if this is gonna be at the next meeting or the one after that, so is there any questions at this point, Alderman Johnson?
Yes. What makes up the board?
The, the board of fire police commissioners would be, establishing it would be very similar to how civil services now. I just need with what I read, and he's right, correct me, it's, there is still three people. It's still three members.
It's one of those members, maybe, uh, let's say, it's.
I believe all of them are now.
But, yeah, we got some reserved, two retired.
Yeah, a couple retired service members.
Right, okay.
All the service.
I would think. That we asked the same ones that are on there, just re-changing the rules and the title.
Yes.
Questions?
No, those questions really just, um, it sounds interesting, I there's a lot of questions by mind that we're asking right now. But will we get some kind of a, like, more thorough document at some point?
Yeah, then, uh, we're with a WAPR sending over the resolutions and the rule changes that other communities have done to go through this route and kind of use it as a template, right?
Right.
Uh, as you said, it may be at the next meeting, we need your discussion, first of all.
I don't know if we're gonna be ready for the twenty fifth meeting, so then, might be.
For another discussion.
Yes. Well. Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Uh, line insurance proposal, this property, man, property insurance for cities. Properties, City Hall, Fire Department, Rec Center, this is just renewal, um, you can see the dollar amounts, they come in estimate every year and they reset every year, do you guys know how much it was increased for this year?
It's like eleven, less than one percent.
Less than one percent. There any questions on that? Tophies and procedures, that's back to the police department.
Folks, sir.
Uh, so the administrative trophy that's in our code, uh, it was put in the code two thousand seven. Uh, sets up with certain arrests for certain offenses at a five hundred dollar fee. On top of the fifty dollar trophy that every tow car gets. Uh, in looking again at other communities and what they've done, we're kind of behind the, the ball on this. Uh, and the fact that we haven't revisited this in the last almost twenty years. Uh, the majority of towns now recognize that certain offenses, uh, consume more time and are more detailed. For instance, the proposal has the highest fee going to vehicles that flee on the police. And one of the main driving components between that being the highest is the majority, vast majority of the time, these people do take off when we locate them. One, they only get fifty dollar fee now, this is not part of the current. And two, they're almost always caught outside of Blue Island. So there is significant time from the police department, whether somebody's in custody or not, that is sent on recovering this vehicle and ultimately whether we go the seizure route or not. Uh, because we're sending an officer and we're also sending our tow service out to wherever the car is to recover. They'll bring it back here. And DUIs and any weapons offenses also elevated fine, just based on the sheer amount of time that police spend, uh, working on the arrest. For these cases. And then it also adds in other crimes that currently aren't in at the five hundred dollar level. Uh, for example, simple battery, uh, certain thefts, things like disorderly conduct, things of that nature right now would just be a fifty dollar fine and they get their car. So.
Perfect.
Yes.
Sorry, you say you wanted to spread the law. It being.
Yeah, so it's tiered kind of by offense, so the highest one would be fifteen hundred dollars and be aggravated fleeing. The next one would be a thousand for DUIs and any weapons of crime cases, and then the current five hundred dollar rate would remain for the offenses we have, but then add in the ones from the criminal code that aren't currently in.
And that, is that in addition to paying how much the vehicle is at the.
Yes, we don't control what they charge, how they charge, anything like that, there are state statutes that say if, uh, they turn out being a victim of a crime, that the tow yard can uh, impose a certain amount of fee, or if we seize a car and the courts end up giving it back, the courts will cap what airline is able to even charge. So.
Questions? What, I'll look at, what, uh, how are we comparing these two, like, what, uh, city departments areas?
Uh, it's, well, again, I was trying to pull like non-home rule communities, I believe, uh, coming out here, so to make sure, what was the one that I sent over? Hampton Mills or something, or something like that, I was picking a smaller, uh, sized, non-home rule. Um, but in just talking to other law enforcement agencies, I know that are home rule, y'all kind of seem to follow the same fee structure. Yes.
Yes, sir, um, is it possible, like, maybe even add, because you have to, I guess, calculate man, man hours, you know, for like you send an office out there per hour or whatever, you know, the time it takes to be maybe you add on to that.
So I believe the fee has to be kind of structured and set the way it is, so to a certain fee, because then they can come and challenge it and, you know, get the refund back. The fees are based on, we give you the amount of fee and you have to actually pay that almost as a bond, get your vehicle back. And then when they have their hearing date, three weeks after the fact when they come here, they can essentially appeal it. And then if that fails, they're gonna peel it out of the bridge, you know, come back here, but that's why it's a set amount. Uh, but we try to calculate it based on hours, even our ticketing system wouldn't allow us to enter manual boxes essentially.
Any questions? Thank you.
And then related dog test. Yeah, I know.
Listen all the time.
I was gonna say all the time, you're on. Yeah, actually, I, right after you sent it, a couple days later, another neighbor.
Oh, really?
Walnut, I checked, there's just a lot of dog being tethered on. Yeah, so there's a dog near my house that I started to hear a lot of barking during the day and just started looking at it. Noticed that apparently, uh, the owner would put the dog out at eight in the morning and come back at five at night, I'd say, I'll go backyard only one. Um, so, uh, we learned in, uh, looking at this, because to me, uh, I thought it would naturally be illegal, sort of seemed wrong. Uh, and animal cruelty, uh, but it is actually not illegal, right? Um, so you put it, I really appreciate the institutions giving us a couple, it looks like a couple of different optional ways of rolling at this, uh, and that the kind of, there's a lot of language in here which stood about how a dog can be tethered, tethered and all of this, so, you know, things about that are important. But kind of, it comes down to, uh, there's kind of two different choices presented here. Uh, one prohibition is tethering a dog outdoors while its owner is not on the premises, and that describes the situation that I saw. And then there's another option, or in the other documents, uh, that is, uh, like basically as I go, one hour. Uh, the, the, the dog can only be tethered for one hour by the company. Um, I, I don't know which is better, which is not, um.
I like some of that language at the end of the second one, where it's one hour and then no tether in ten to six.
Yes, uh, yes, definitely, yeah.
Right there.
Actually, I, I as long as I've been in, I'll, I get no idea that we do have anything like this on that, so I'm really glad that you brought this to the law, I mean. Um, but my question is, does it have anything to do with weather? Like.
There is some.
For instance, for housing, where you can't keep somebody out in a certain temperature, I would think that.
There, there is in one of these, it, thirty-two below, is this, is this, is a threshold. Um, which seems reasonable, uh, so it's your. Extreme temperatures are a bad thing. This is, this is a sample. And we will probably be somebody that. Alderman Johnson.
Yes, um, I would like to know how does that law, you apply to maybe a guard dog?
Yeah, that's a good, good question.
I don't.
I, and.
Like commercial, like commercial or even home, you know, maybe you have a dog that, you know, some of the elders he had, like, dog dog.
But, but I mean, I would think the dog would be yours. Something, yeah, but if you got, maybe tools of property.
More like a junkyard.
Yeah, or with the yard is, yeah.
Yeah.
I think some of that, some of this is probably where it's, if we, there's no, uh, shelter in place, I read in here, it's certain conditions would have to apply. If you're gonna have dogs, the garbage stuff, right, some kind of shelter and food.
Without doubt, yeah.
This only refers to dogs that are actually leashed, right? Like if a dog is loose in a bed, that's bad.
Right, that just doesn't apply to any of them, right? Which I, you know, I mean, I pretty much, I get what you're saying, I mean, I guess if you see a dog outside twenty-four hours a day, at least it's, that's not gonna be great, but, you know, I don't actually.
Better than being tied up.
Right, yeah.
Other questions regarding this? Moving on to proposal to establish Lewis Street as one way between Greenwood and Western Avenue, so currently this, we do not enter off Western. One of the conditions to building the bank is they wanted it to be either two-way or one-way off of Western. So I was gonna put this out there and we don't need a decision tonight, um. I know all of them probably would like to talk to constituents in that area, they just asked us for this a couple days before the agenda. But right now it's one way only going, uh, eastbound. Um, they were either, they were requesting, um, either make it two-way or make it one-way in the opposite direction going westbound. So if there's any strong thoughts now, if not, we still have time, um, they just like this done before the bank actually is built. Which we closed on today. Beverly Bank.
Beverly Bank requested, okay.
And, uh, they, they close on the property today.
Oh, great. Yeah, that's.
Alright, just let us know, if, if you put it on, uh, hugely. Discussion I E P A loan for lead service line replacement, I believe this is in regards to the grant that we received for lead lines and wants to talk about this. Uh, so this is a, uh, state loan, state loan program, as stated, uh, to address, uh, lead service lines. Moving forward, I believe the amount is two point four six million, if I'm recalling correctly, uh. We have, uh, this is going to be part of, we have a meeting coming up with Burke Engineering to discuss what capital, uh, improvements are gonna look like in twenty twenty-six. This is gonna be, this funding source is gonna be a big part of it, so, um, this is as much as anything, just to inform the council that we've, uh, done the application for this, we've gotten approval for it. Uh, and it is going to be part of a broader plan that, uh, either in the November twenty-fifth or December sixteenth, we, and we hope to have uh, a little bit more information for you on what twenty twenty-six is gonna look like in terms of capital repairs, and this is all.
And this is also gonna, obviously, all go into the appropriations discussion moving into the first quarter of twenty twenty six. So it's state money for lead lines and more to come on what our side of that commitment is gonna look like.
Alderman, parallel.
Uh maybe you already said this, but is this a long this potentially to give a.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Next three are uh came out of uh planning zoning. First one is discussion special use for a two-family dwelling at one twenty eight forty two Winchester. This is a current two-family dwelling. They're asking permission to continue being a two-family dwelling. And I I didn't let the Alderman of the ward know, uh the planning zoning had a lot of questions. Billing Department says it's passed all their uh codes and inspections to continue with being a two-flat. If there's anything, any concerns, please let us know before the following year. The next one is eighteen hundred Mount. It's currently an auto shop. It's likely to remain an auto shop. It's been an auto shop my entire life. And it also passed the planning and zoning. So again, the Alderman is aware. If there's any questions, please let us know before the next city council. Text amendment. Is that, is that referring to you? Okay, okay, that's it's. All right. It's it's related to.
Did they put any additional restrictions on the uh?
They just don't want five. I haven't really talked any mayor's announcements other than uh very important, uh we're we're coming to levy season pretty soon. Um so the forum is definitely necessary at the next two meetings. Um so the twenty fifth is our regular meeting. And then we're gonna call a special meeting instead of the second and fourth. We never really meet the second and fourth in December ever. Uh we're gonna meet December sixteenth. Those two dates are any issue with the Alderman being here, please let me know. Um especially the sixteenth, we can still move that around. We need a quorum to pass the levy. Please let me know, very important. Um city clerk is sent here. I have no she would say unless the deputy clerk wants to say anything.
Hi, inviting everybody for the suicide parade uh the first week of December, I mean this first area of December. And also um the forestry board and these um volunteers for the winter season for pride. So for my information, both of us.
Thank you. And Dave Dev uh was successful?
Yes.
Yes, good event. Was our fourth year now?
Fifth.
Fifth year. I'm jealous. City attorney, do you have any? City administration.
Couple of quick things. One, uh just piggyback on that, want to thank uh Police, Fire and Public Works for uh putting together a great day of the dead. Um obviously, we have the light break coming up, so uh primarily thanks them for that because like I always like to say, this stuff doesn't just happen. It's a lot of people. So um one thing I want to say for, I just want to make sure we get this on the record. This is part of what we do annually to put this on the record. So I just asked the 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 city clerk to make sure this is part of the minutes. So moving in uh towards the December sixteenth meeting, our intention is to uh pass the uh tax levy for twenty twenty six. Uh the, as we have done in previous years, uh the uh our attention on that tax levy is that will reflect a four point nine percent increase from the previous year. Uh and we will have obviously more financials for you um when the levy is prepared and we'll have a draft for you before that. Uh but again, as a matter of record, our intention is to pass a levy in twenty twenty six with a four point nine percent increase. So yeah.
With the four point nine, this is what we ask every year and it's not guaranteed. Some years they even lower below zero percent. I remember I was in a township and we actually were lower, it was like point zero, negative point zero six. It all depends on the estimated value, a bunch of calculations, formulas. And right now, we haven't even gotten our second installment yet. They're promising to put those out some. Still above. Um Alderman announcements, reports or comments? Alderman. Alderman.
Um I also wanted to thank the police department for Halloween and Day of the Dead. They were out there um. Talking to the kids, posing with them. It was, it was really nice to see that, you know, they were. Part of the community. People were excited to see him there. Um I know Dexter, you probably got a food pantry going on. There's a million food pantries out there and now I have one. Uh Veterans Memorial School has started a food pantry to help the families uh that are dependent on staff benefits. That attend our school. So if anybody wants to grab a lot of food at the school, um we're more than willing to take it. Uh I also wanted to thank Public Works for the stop sign at one hundred and twenty-third and Highland. The constituents that asked for it have actually called me and thanked us for putting it up to very happy about it. And I wanted to thank Public Works for the snow removal. By the time I left for work, the roads were clear and practically dry, so.
Alderman John.
Yes, um I'd like to thank Public Works for doing what they do, keep our community clean. And uh I want to let uh people who's less fortunate uh for Thanksgiving, all these have a um. Thanksgiving meal and it's forty bucks. You get pretty much everything you need for the meal. Um for people who's who snap in Pittsburgh, but. Or anybody. That's it.
Alderman.
Just real quick, uh just we had on to comments about Halloween. Uh at my house, um we hand out one to a customer and I know based on how much we had. We had two thousand seven hundred twenty-five kids that are up there. And um I will say it was a wonderful night, um and it it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger in our area. And the crowds are wonderful. The kids are from out of the neighborhood. Everyone is so well behaved. Thank you, genuine. It's really a nice night. And having the police department there as so visible, obviously, it helps. So it's very friendly, pleasant, and they were appreciated. And I want to thank the administration again for closing down the street. So it's a great, turned out to be a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. So do you have any plans? All right, anything else from the Alderman that not need a motion to go on executive motion? Much love, Alderman. Second, Alderman Rutherford, common question.
Are we in motion to reconvene?
Yes.
I read the motions to reconvene. Organ Routhy, Board, Executive Officer Oliver Johnson, all papers say aye.
Aye.
The executive session we talked eminent and probable litigation. It's a motion to adjourn. All the courts have all the criminal, all papers say aye.
Aye.
November twenty fifth, for any reason, please let me know. You can't.